Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Wednesday, April 2, 2014. My name is Rob Gerretti, I'm the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my right is Scott Bugbee, to my left Jim Leahan, our other, the two other members of the Board, Jack Hathaway, our Town Administrator, whatever, Marion Harrington, our Executive Assistant, and I must inform all watching and present that today's meeting will be audio and videotaped. Mr. Hathaway, would you like to read the agenda?
Absolutely. Norfolk Board of Selectmen for Wednesday, February, April 2. First order of business, we have Mr. Frank Gay from Gatren to talk about a proposed Norfolk Shuttle route. Cindy Andrade at some point tonight from CPC to talk about their article. On the Town Administration report, we have budget and Town Meeting and Warrant discussions, along with a discussion of the Mediacomment Regional Communications Center and Norfolk Public Safety Building, action items, the Federated Church Easter Sunrise Service, amendment to the DPW contract, and under discussion items, we have the Old Town Hall potential use.
Thank you very much, Jack. Mr. Gay, I see you're here, why don't you join us at the table? So, we're joined by Frank Gay with Gatra, the Greater Attleboro Transit, Greater Attleboro Regional Transit. What does Gatra stand for?
I was gonna say that, I always struggle with transit and...
Greater Attleboro Transit Authority. But the abbreviation doesn't really fit.
Where's Franklin in there? Gaftra, anyway.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just thought it would be good for us to come, I mean, I haven't been here in a long time. Give you a little update, I'm not sure how much you know about Gatra, but, you know, we're a public authority under 161B, we get federal, state, local funding, it really works from the local level, in a partnership with the local communities that, you know, we come to the different communities with proposals for service, it's really the community that says yes or no, and how much service and the types of service we provide in the community, and we also contract all of our services out, so we have, you know, private partnerships with various companies that run the day-to-day services for us, you know, hire the drivers and mechanics. In this case, for the Norfolk Shuttle, this is actually a joint effort that we submitted a grant, it's a federal grant that is just administrated by Mastart, but we did it in conjunction with Kiesland Transit, which is a local company that also does some work for us now, so as an operator for this service, it would be Kiesland Transit that would run the day-to-day service for us, you know, we would supply vehicles for them to use on the shuttle. And the original intent of the grant was to try to address a need that was seen for getting people, both visitors and more importantly, employees, to the Norfolk prison system, so to make a connection with the commuter rail station in Norfolk, to get people over to those facilities. We've kind of expanded that to look at maybe making some regional connections with this. We do run a service now from Medway that comes over to the Norfolk train station now, so as you see on this map at the top corner, there's a route coming in from, that the Medway Council on Agent runs for us, and over in the town of Franklin, we run a local bus service in the town of Franklin, that we're also proposing with this new route to make that connection. So, the route would actually originate at the big Y now on 140 in Franklin, connect with this shuttle, run into the town of Rentham, to a commuter parking lot facility that they've set aside for commuters to take the train up to Norfolk, or take the bus to Norfolk, I would say. Also now trying to get some service over to Patriot Place and the medical facilities at Patriot Place, and also then connect into the town of, I mean, into downtown center area of Norfolk. And there was some, we've looked at a couple of different routes, you know, heading straight up 1A and then doing, I think it's Winter Street, and coming over by the prisons that way. After talking with the Department of Corrections, they felt to start, they would like us to look and concentrate on just getting to MCI Norfolk first, so that's why we're kind of running this one spur from the station over to Norfolk and back, to, you know, if there's a, if that proves successful, then I think they'd be more inclined to looking at us, you know, running further into the correctional system. So, what I've given you is, you know, that kind of a draft route for you to look at, make comments, suggestions, and also a draft schedule as to, you know, how we would envision the service operating. You know, we're really trying to target at least early morning to get the buses here to get to the trains, getting that connection from the train to the Norfolk Correctional Institute, and also then during the mid-part of day, try to, you know, make those connections from here to Gillette, and also connect with the Franklin system as well. So, we're gonna be going to the Rentham Board of Selectmen in, I think, two weeks from now, and after that, if, you know, unless there's some concerns or changes, then I think we're gonna be ready to probably start service hopefully by the end of April. So, I'm really here to, you know, get your thoughts and ideas, and if you see things in here that we're missing, we're certainly willing to look at it, and I know one question came up today at our board meeting about maybe trying to get service over to the Council on Agent, we'll talk to them, and, you know, see if some of the midday trips, we could make that kind of swing through there. We will have time, more time during the midday, so that might be something we could certainly look at trying to do in this, right, you know, just off the top, that came up this afternoon at our board meeting, actually, so.
Who would you see, I mean, obviously the employees and visitors to the Correction Center, I know who those people are, but who, do you have a vision as to who, I mean, will it be teenagers, will it be elderly, will it be all of the above?
I would, I would tend to say, you know, I mean, because of the schedule, it's hourly, pretty much, you know, it'd be really more for, you know, kids to get around town after school, get to jobs, you know, maybe help mom and dad out a little and getting them to around town, you know, and seniors that are still able enough to get around and try this as a different alternative. So, you know, really looking at those two. I mean, the commuter market is really a tougher market to us to get into, so, I mean, this is gonna have to operate for a little while, and, you know, we'll tweak it and see what we can, you know, do to attract riders to get in it, to using it to get to the train station, but, you know, that's a harder market for us to address. So, initially, I think it's more, you know, people that have that, either don't have a choice, or, you know, maybe the kids, you know, wanna try something different to get around town, to make those connections, and I think, you know, this kind of addresses some of the discussions you and I have had for a long time about, you know, getting service farther than just trying to run something local, make some other connections, connects in Franklin. We've talked with, we've talked to Rentham Village, that is still on the board for discussions, but right now, you know, we're not going down that route yet, so.
So to speak.
Yeah. So to speak.
Pun intended.
Also, you know, with Plainridge, Pollard coming in, there's already, there's some discussions, we, in fact, we talked about this again today at the board meeting, that they have an interest in looking at trying to run service from the south, you know, the Attleboro, not the Attleboro Corridor on one, to get people for work into that area. So, there is an opportunity, maybe in the future, of also connecting at Patriot Place and having service run south towards the Attleboro area, so. Get out of town.
So, thank you for coming in.
Okay.
Thanks for putting some thought into this. I have just a couple of questions, but actually, I'll go last, so, Scott, do you have anything?
Well, I'm not really that familiar with the service, so, does it cost, who pays, the riders pay, how does it?
It'll be, our basic fares are a dollar for anyone, anyone over 60 or disability, students are 50 cents, everyone else would be a dollar. And then we have some, you know, we have like a 10-ride pass that we offer, and a monthly pass that have some reduction in those, in the fare, but the standard fare is a dollar or 50 cents.
And does it cost the town any money to participate in this?
We already pay.
Or do, but?
We already pay.
We pay on our cherry sheet, but the good news is, is reduction to the MB, to our assessment to the MBTA, so net, it doesn't cost us anything.
Okay. And it opens up more spots, so.
I would just encourage you to get the senior center on.
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely look at that.
I was gonna mention that, I'd rather see you get the senior center than the slots, my own opinion, but, you know, at least you're not going to Foxwoods, so that's good news.
(inaudible).
Well, that's just me, and it might be the seniors going to the slots, but I understand. But I think the senior center would be a good, I would encourage you to do that.
Plus, I don't know if the Medway one does this already, but hitting, since you're on 115 anyway, hitting Hillcrest. Hillcrest Village is right up the street from the train station, but, do you guys take part in Next Bus, or do you have?
Can we, when the (inaudible) is, can we post this on the webpage?
We have, in our Attleboro system, we have digital recorders, so it's, you know, AVL and DT, GPS integrated in the buses. Up here, we probably wouldn't be doing that initially, so.
These kinds of routes, you know, this really suburban, you can get out of whack fairly quickly, and then people have no idea what's going on.
Yeah.
So, I would, I would hope that you could maybe get to get some grant funding or something to get the GPS in there.
Okay.
Next Bus, for those of you who don't know, is a service where you can text, 41411 is the number, you text where you are, and it tells you when the next bus is coming.
Makes sense, it'd be perfect.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is a good system.
And I just, the only, let's see, it's interesting that Pond Street's on there, to me, that's a little interesting, and I'm thinking about it, I'd be a little worried that Pond Street would become like a satellite T-Lot, where people think, I'll just stash my car at Pond Street, grab the bus, head up the street to the train station.
Well, it goes, it goes back to my opening question, and, you know, Frank has taken input from me to add, to create this, and so I think, I think Pond Street was added because I had suggested it.
I think during the summer, it makes sense with kids and...
Well, as a way for the kids to get to the fields.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm talking about it with more people around, you know, just in town halls, some kids, people with parent, kids and stuff, just talking about if they would let their kids ride a bus, you know, and we have such a protect, you know, myself included, we have such a protective culture now, that some parents don't even let their kids take a school bus. I don't know if, I'm not sure if people would take the bus, let their kid, you know, let their 12-year-old take the bus all the way to Patriot Place.
No, not their 12-year-old.
Maybe the 14, 15, but, you know, or to the playground.
I mean, there's that, there's that, whatever that age, there's that short gap between when they're driving, when they're, you know, 16 and a half.
I could, I'd let my 12-year-old get on the bus and go to the fields.
That's why we put it on there.
Yeah, but, so you wouldn't, you know, are you anticipating maybe seasonal changes to the schedule?
Um, we would certainly look at that.
Because Pond Street's under snow all winter. Oh, we don't even plow it, do we? No, no, it's, so you couldn't even get in there. Once the snow falls, you might wanna cut that stop right out.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that, though, so of rogue, you know, people that figure it out, park at Pond Street and then take the bus up to take the MBTA.
Get some nice ticket revenue out of that. Post no commuter parking and then...
Or we could, or we could sell some parking tickets. We could charge them for the parking.
Well, you ticket them in five bucks a day, or one dollar less than the T-Lot.
There you go, nice for everybody.
Jim, any other questions?
No, I would leave Pond Street on, but you're right, seasonal, I would, not could do you much good in the wintertime, but I could see kids taking advantage of it in the summertime. I mean, it places rocking once, any day now. About mid-April, that place really likes it.
My kid had a game, I might actually take the bus instead of trying to find a parking space.
Exactly, because the parking lot is nuts.
I mean, it's busy during the summer.
What kind of buses do you see running, what size?
Probably just a 22-passenger mini-bus, similar to what we run with our Council on Agent work right now.
Yeah.
You know, it's small, it's easy to get around, and, you know, we don't envision, you know, some heavy route ridership right in initially, so, you know, we'll give it a try, and, you know, if it starts building up, we'd probably go to a little bigger bus, but, you know, maybe a 26-passenger, something like that, but nothing big.
And how, what's the next step in your process? When do we know what you're doing, and what do we, do we have to do anything?
No, the board voted today to amend our fiscal, fiscal 14 budget to put money in from now through the end of June, so the money is in the budget. It's, you know, it's really, as long as the board, as long as you agree to go ahead, then...
Do you need a formal vote?
It would be nice, I mean, it, I think it would be worth having it.
All right. Is there any other questions?
Is that vote to just approve the schedule as presented, or what are you asking us to vote on?
Just to, you know, approve the concept of having bus service in town. I mean, the schedule, we may tweak here and there, it's still in the basic route, you know, that you agree with the basic route, the way we've got it.
I move to support the proposed busing schedule for Gatra and the community of Norfolk.
Second. Questions made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those of you who have said aye. Aye, opposed, no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Senior center.
Yep. Yep, we will look and put that on there.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Nice seeing you.
Our next meeting's with Cindy Andrade.
No, she's probably not gonna be here till...
Advisory Board meeting right now, so.
Yeah, so we gotta work around that.
For CPC.
All she wants to do is come in and give us the numbers on...
Which we know.
Yeah, which we know.
2.54 miles.
What's that?
Nothing.
Well, she announced it at the Abashir meeting, so it's no longer under executive session privilege.
Okay, well, that's fine, so let's, we can proceed on to your report, Mr. Administrator.
Absolutely. The budget is still a work in progress, we've made some more progress, some forward, some backwards. I had had a concept where we're gonna take some, I took some of the debt service out of the budget, because we were gonna fund it out of some, an old project, the Underground Utilities Project, actually, that we had some funds left over, and we're gonna try and apply that towards the debt service, and we can't. So, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to move that towards a similar project, which really doesn't come as a surprise, but I tried. So, I had to put that debt service back into the budget, so that took us in the wrong direction for a little bit. We've made some other improvements, some more discussions with King Philip, so I'm in the, I'm in better shape than I was a week ago, but I'm still a little bit over $100,000 out of whack, but continuing to work on that, so. I'm trying to get this all wrapped up for the Advisory Board meeting of next Wednesday. I know Jim's away, but I don't know, you know, I don't know if you guys are going to that meeting, but...
I'm sure one of us will be there.
I can probably, what is the next one?
As soon as I get that closer, I will share that with you individually, if not as a board.
We did, we did refine the fire budget a little bit as well.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, that's true.
We did a...
13, or?
Well, the 13th firefighter was in there, but we did a, we had a pretty good, healthy discussion with Cole and with Pete regarding the callback component to his budget. I did a, based on Cole's own numbers, I did a pretty detailed analysis of how we were able to, I think we took 22 grand out of the callback budget, so we found a little bit more there, too, and they agreed.
Is your snow and ice still the plus number?
I think so, is that 175, at least this is, I don't know if this is updated.
Still haven't, haven't, haven't...
Hasn't snowed since last time we met.
I haven't changed the FY15 number yet.
Well, there's your last 25,000.
Yeah.
I mean, push comes to shove.
Yeah. I don't want that, I want, you know...
I think we'll find, I don't know.
It's another lesson we learned this year, that...
What was the final number, Jack?
It's not final yet, it's still, it's still April 2.
It's still climbing.
May 10, I think, was the latest I've heard.
Mine, I had a Little League game, snowed out in May, that was probably...
I remember snowing in May.
1977 or somewhere around there.
Well, I remember it, so, yeah.
Somebody told me the other day, it was an old, a guy who, an old timer, said, "May 10, that's the date."
I always had in my head, it was May 7, but it may have been May.
I went with April 1st. Done. I still have piles in my yard.
The Town Meeting and Warrant Review, Jim and I have both heard from King Philip that they want to pull the...
The debt article?
The turf, just the turf part of the debt article.
Really?
Some internal, I guess, just internally debating on the school committee and...
It's an issue of the fundraising component, let it go with that, so they wanted it pulled at this point in time.
I did share that with Pat Sneed, Chairman of the Advisory Board, who's, they're meeting downstairs, it started at 6:30, and he would kind of prefer that...
We leave it, leave it in?
Well, he thought it would be awkward to pull it at this point, I guess I kind of agree with him, and we should just...
We'll just IP it.
We can just make the motion to not fund that part.
It's got the other two components.
Yeah, it's all together, yeah.
It's all in one.
That's right, we did do it all in one.
But the motion can just not fund that part, so it's IP in a portion of it.
Yeah.
I lost, I lost my faithful assistant.
I mean, truth of the matter is, if we passed it, it would be really irrelevant to their actions, anyway. In truth, irrelevant.
Meaning, how so?
Well, the fact that we've given them the opportunity doesn't in any way encumber them to do it, so the fact that they choose not to pursue anything is their free choice.
Well, but they're gonna pursue something.
But it may not be this way, is what I'm saying, yeah, so.
Although that would show up as a, wouldn't that show up as a potential indebtedness for us? If we pass the article, even if we don't issue the debt?
Yeah, we'd have to show it on the financial statements.
That's true, we would. That is true.
I just, you know, speaking for myself and of the spouse of a...
All right.
Oh, come on in.
Hey, Cindy.
I just heard that...
No, Tom, no.
Well, you gotta sit at the mic.
You're on TV.
We're joined by Cindy Andrade of the CPC.
Who's on her way in.
Who's...
For our meeting, yeah.
Well, we, we know, we know you'll be brief, because we are, we, I think we know what you're telling us, anyway.
Yes, I am telling, well, I am, but...
And we're joined by Mr. Terpser, also of the CPC.
Hey, Tommy.
All right, good.
Okay.
Hey, Tom.
Another wise decision.
They're upstairs.
Yep.
So, you have some news for us on the numbers? Is that what you're coming with?
Well, I don't think they've changed much, we haven't formally heard them, but I thought I would stop in because I understand you don't have a lot of business.
Thanks, Cindy.
Nice, thanks.
How gracious of you.
So I hear. So, um...
When's your next meeting? We're all gonna stop in individually, just to see if we can, no kidding, chat.
In five minutes.
Five minutes.
I saw Marion outside, and she said you weren't gonna be here very long, and we obviously are gonna meet and discuss the...
That was Marion's wish, by the way, that wasn't our...
Dream on, Harrington.
She has the, she has the over-under tonight.
We're going to be discussing the final numbers for Jane and Paul's Farms.
Yes.
I know you already have the ballpark number, I don't anticipate it's gonna change much. I do wanna incorporate some legal expenses, and I was looking to Jack.
Now, the purchase price that you announced at the Advisory Board meeting has not changed, right?
Has not changed.
2.45.
Yes.
And the $70, oh, excuse me, the $10,000 per acre, 70-acre lot is the foundation starting point?
Yes, to the best of my knowledge.
So, the difference is 1.75, plus legal fees and any, minus any additional money that we might get over the 10,000 per acre?
Right, is when they determine what they're going to, what the agricultural, Department of Agriculture will contribute, so the ballpark number is still the same, I don't think legal fees would be...
Jeff's on vacation this week, so I don't have a number for you, but it's...
That's fine.
I can't believe it would be terribly, terribly high, and I think...
Because it's mostly a review.
Yeah.
The only other thing I had wished to speak to you about when we came in was the other warrant article, which was the open space plan. I had, well, I'm kind of like torn here, because I haven't discussed with the committee yet, but we had also hoped to do a trails plan, and I'm going to suggest that we postpone that a bit, because I'm not really comfortable with having full knowledge of what we would get for the money expended, so I would like to, if we have Fall Town meeting, I'd like to be ready to bring it to Fall Town meeting, if not, I'd just like to go forward with the open space plan. The number was, I'm guessing it's around 15,000.
Is that gonna be enough?
Um...
For a decent plan that will...
We already have one, it's an updating, and the reason I had to bump it up from the original estimate, which was about 12, was because we also have to have our consultant do an ADA compliance, because we don't have an ADA committee here, and I did consult with the DPW as far as if we had to go out to bid, or if we just had to get three quotes, and I'm not sure, I think 15,000 is the bid? Is that right?
Zero to five is best business practice, five to 25 is solicit three quotes.
Okay, so we'll have to do the three quotes, so we won't have to go out to bid.
Yeah.
But, you know, there may be some ancillary costs of having somebody prepare, just kind of, not an RFP per se, but just kind of a scope of work to solicit three quotes.
It never goes as quickly as you planned.
Right, well, it's gonna, it'll take a year, from the time we start it to the time that it's approved by the state, so. That was the only other number I wanted to come with before you, and I'm guessing it's gonna be in the range of about 15,000, and that would include a contingency, any, like I said, if we don't have to go out to bid, we don't have advertising costs, but, you know, we may need someone to help just do the scope a little bit. But Bob McGee may be able to do it, you might be able to do it with us.
I would, I'm glad you're gonna postpone it, I hope you can really, you know, one of the things that I've hoped we could get done here, not just an open space plan, but really have a way of communicating to the public in general what we own, where we own it, where the trails are, what they can take advantage of, folks don't know.
Right.
And get it in, get it published, and post it in the library, post it on our webpage, you know, wherever, and take advantage, especially if we can get access now, which hopefully will be the case, to the Weber property that makes it more accessible than it has been. We've got some beautiful pieces of property, Highland Lake is gorgeous.
Right. I would like to, I just don't feel comfortable that I have a full understanding of what's gonna be on paper and what can be accessed online, I'd certainly, online, would like to drill down into individual properties and trails.
Great idea.
I've only solicited one quote, and I'm, I would just like to work a little further to get a really good understanding, because it kind of came at the last minute.
Take your time.
Another reason to think about delaying it, too, is just, I know Ray Goff, the new planner, not, again, one more thing to pile on his shoulders, but he's had a lot of experience, you know, putting together master plans, and I think he's done open space plans as well, so.
Good, I was gonna hope to, matter of fact, that occurred to me this afternoon, to see if he would be of some assistance with the open space plan, either in soliciting bids or, I mean, since we already have a base plan, it's really just an updating, but absolutely, I mean, gosh, if we can have someone with a great deal of knowledge assist us in it...
Yeah, that's his expertise, so.
Right, and maybe even with the trail maps, you know, the whole, that whole project.
You had indicated at the Advisory Board that you, if I remember, I may be wrong, but I thought you wanted a vote from this board concerning Jane and Paul's.
We would, and I'm not sure, I sent you kind of a late email today with a draft press release for, that Trust for Public Lands has developed.
I didn't look at my email late today.
When did you send it, Cindy? I didn't see it.
Probably about 5 o'clock to you. I got it this morning and late this afternoon, I'm thinking, I should send it to Jim, because they're gonna be soliciting a quote from...
I got one from Chris, is that the one?
No, it was from me. But, they will be looking for a quote from the Selectmen, whomever is available, hopefully, if you take a vote...
Oh, I got that from Chris.
Okay. To add a comment into the press release that will be going out from Trust, they will be issuing the press release.
Okay.
So, how many, how long are you around before you travel?
I sent him a personal comment.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah. No, I wasn't speaking for the board, just for me. I sent him a personal comment. He sent me that this morning and
You had to give Rob to give.
You all take a vote.
I wasn't, I was not speaking for the board. I was speaking for me.
It would be nice if someone, Mr. Chairman, speak for the board, if the board in fact is in agreement. So, I will just leave it at that.
Okay.
All right?
Yes. I didn't get an email from you, so I didn't respond to anything. So, okay.
We're all set?
Yeah.
We're all set.
Okay.
Cindy, do you know The Rockwood Road Playground?
Norfolk Community Park at Rockwood Road?
I wanna call it the Gumps Playground, but that one
Yes, I know.
Is the, I assume the contractor's got some finished work to do?
He does and we've been in touch this week because the snow finally went away. The snow had been out there until probably close to this weekend.
Yeah.
And Sunshine Paving, who is the contractor, will be out this week and will be formulating a timeline to finish up their part and Ann Proto is in touch with whatever playground people to finish up their part. We, it is not open because the playground is not 100% complete. There is construction debris still there and all of the curb stops are not out yet. And the striping isn't done.
So, what is the timeframe?
I don't know. We have just been in touch and they are coming out this week.
Because there's not a lot of work left.
There's not a lot of work left.
Because, could we Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. I got nothing.
It's just, we should do something special to Open it.
Yes, I would agree. So, as soon as I know a timeline for completion of this portion, I will let you all know.
So, it's at least a month away anyway.
Well, if they're just coming out this week.
Depends on when they mobilize, that's all.
It depends when they mobilize and the only other thing that's a little, I mean, probably, I'm speaking out of turn, but probably the playground and parking can be open, but anything with regard to fields and things that need to be grassed is gonna have to be kept
Got coined off, yeah.
I mean, even if you could get it early May, it would be great.
Well, I know I've heard that people have been out there like looking at it.
Don't we wanna grow for a season?
Uh, I don't I know that's true for soccer fields.
It's a playground field. I mean, it's gonna be heavily used.
It has to be stable and Upstairs? I know it has to be stable and well grown in, so I'm not sure exactly when the grass areas will be viable. Maybe a while, but I'd love to get the playground open like ASAP.
Yeah, I mean, early May would be great. Weather's not really great until then anyway, so, you know, it's We've got another two, three snowstorms due in April, so
Oh, kids are out there as soon as they can.
Big ceremony the next couple of weeks.
Oh.
All right. So, you don't need us to stop back in?
Nope.
And someone will let me know if you take a vote?
Yep.
Okay. And you're fine with the open space plan?
Coming off?
No, open space you wanna keep on. Trails you wanna come off.
I'm gonna take the trails map. I would, I will suggest that we take the trails map off.
We probably won't take, technically we won't take it off at this point. We'll just let the advisory board IP it and everybody will say, "Yeah."
Well, it's one, it's bundled.
Excellent.
So, we can do the same thing with the motion?
In the motion, we can do an amended friendly motion or whatever, just to have the open space and recreation plan. So.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy.
You're upstairs.
I'm upstairs.
They're waiting for you.
They are waiting for me.
All right, Jack, you were explaining, we were on King Philip.
I was just pitching, making an overall pitch that we should, we need to have turf fields and I will not hide the fact that my wife is the field hockey coach and that is greatly impacted, but the football, lacrosse, band, soccer
Yep.
Are all impacted and it's gotten to the point where King Philip is at a disadvantage versus some of the other schools in the Hockamock and area towns and I hope we can get that fixed at some point soon.
You'll get no argument from me.
Thank you.
Nor from me.
Apparently you won't get any money from me though, since we're pulling it off.
Apparently not. One thing I wanted to talk about with you was the Metacomet Regional Communications Center. That is the regional dispatch center for those who
Is it really being called Metacomet or you just busting my chops?
No, it's really being called Metacomet. It was brought forward by Mr. Nutting of Franklin, Franklin Town Minister. That was his suggestion. We wanted to call it the King Philip Dispatch Center, but then Franklin joined the party and we went with Metacomet. So, I think I've told you, if not at a meeting, at least individually, that we're struggling with a location. We had a location at the Rentham Public Safety Building and after getting the architects and engineers and other consultants involved, looking at the space requirements, that became, we came to the realization that the Rentham Public Safety Building wouldn't work because there's just space limitations. We looked at three or four other locations in Plainville and Franklin and Rentham. Nothing here, although we did have some conversations about the Old Town Hall. But we had one site that was a tax title piece of land that Rentham owns that turned out to have too much pollution and we just realized that the construction there would just be severely delayed and maybe cost prohibitive. So, we're now focusing on this building, which is actually in Norfolk. It's in the Shire Development and it's a, it's, I think, about a 16,000 square foot building. For some reason, my thing is not double-sided. Nor is yours. But it is about a 16,000 square foot building. It's been sitting idle for about five years. It was newly constructed at that time, never got an occupancy permit. They're still paying their taxes, so it's owned by an individual, or at least a corporation. So, we've toured this piece of property. It's just an open shell on the inside. It's very interesting that, so the dispatch facility would use about a quarter of this building. They need about 6,000 square feet and so they would get about 4,000 on the first floor and then there's a mezzanine in the back, so they would have some extra space where we could put the director's office and then they would have kind of an oversight of looking down at the dispatchers. It would, it would work out really well. Exactly. So, in having those discussions with the chiefs there and from all the different towns and that we had our architects and engineers that worked for the Metacomet, we started having discussions about what if we put the Norfolk Police Station in this building and the other 12,000 square feet? So, it's something that I wanted to, this just happened over the last, the end of last week and into this week, that we started having these discussions. It is an interesting conversation and I think with very rough, kind of back of the napkin calculations, this is something we can do in the four to six million dollar range, which would allow us to work on this facility, become a landlord to the Metacomet and receive some income back and also dedicate some funds towards the public safety bill, our current public safety building, to turn that into a fire building, fire, fire station. Of course, timing is always the critical part of, you know, we're either at a dead standstill or we're going 100 miles an hour and this is quickly becoming one of those projects that we have to go 100 miles an hour at. So, it's something we need to try and talk about, ideally for the Maytown meeting. You know, whether we start entering, so I should back up a little bit. For the Metacomet purposes, you know, the current owner of the property is willing to lease them space, so we could just go down that path and Norfolk doesn't get involved at all. From So, obviously, we could just go down that path and then the landlord or the property owner would have to, you know, there's work to be done, probably in the $200,000 range, just to make sure that all the landscaping and all that, parking lots are put in, we make sure that the drainage systems are all up to, up to par, that the common areas are built out. Metacomet would have the responsibility to finish their section, build out their section. So, I guess I'm bringing it forward tonight to think about if, you know, if you guys wanna go down this path at all for exploring it for a public safety, for a police station. It's obviously not an ideal location for fire. It's at the southern end of town. It's, but it is, for police, it's not, you know, they don't have to be in the center of town because they're really responding from on the road a majority of the time. So, I guess I throw that out as an introduction and kind of like to hear questions or concerns that you guys might have. Obviously, we'd have to go in to, quickly go in and negotiate, you know, start trying to negotiate this. And as I will tell you, it's, I have the appraised value is 712,000. I even have the backside of the Meant to do double-sided. Apparently, I didn't. If you want that, you can have.
Well
Go ahead.
When I first heard about this, first, I know that both chiefs support this. I can tell you that, that as a member of the building committee for the public safety building, the last estimate we got For both a renovation and new construction, the cheapest component of that was about $11 million. And that's two years old, so you can add about another seven to eight percent per year on top of that. So, we're up around 12 to 13 million dollars to redo and add new components, because it involved a new garage, to the existing facility. The rough back sheet estimate to make a police station and to renovate, the three major things you'd have to do to make the current facility usable for fire, although it's usable as it is, but obviously, you have a roof issue, you have a heating issue. I assume you could say heating and air conditioning issue. I assume they're tied together. And we'd need to extend the back of the garage to hold the trucks, not change it, but extend it, which is not heavy money. Bob Bullock estimates that all of those three components would be somewhere in the neighborhood between 5 and 600,000 dollars. Say he's 10% off. If we could renovate that building to make it sustainable for fire and get a new police station and do this for 5 million dollars, we will never have an opportunity to do that again. And then get revenue from the dispatch center as well to have, help offset some of that cost. I gotta admit, it sure got my attention because that's about a third of what it would cost us to work with this single building down here. So, it really, it's something I would definitely wanna take a look at. The only watch out I had, short term, was that if we're gonna purchase it, I would like to think that we had some assurances that in fact rec was gonna go there. And, you know, there's a lot, everybody said yes, but nobody signed anything, to my knowledge. Nobody is, you know, nobody's put the glue down on the table and said, "I'm not gonna take the sheet off the table." I wouldn't wanna, because the rec component really, we got 2.7 million dollars, you said?
It's in the 2.5.
2.5 to 2.7 million dollars, literally in the bank to build that rec center.
Right.
That's a critical component to this. I mean, it helps make it work. And so, if we could nail that down, this, this is something we really need to take a serious look at, in my opinion. Because the numbers just work.
Scott? No, I agree with that. I mean, so, Jack, do you think, since we have to move so fast forward, how fast could you nail down the rec section, I mean, to get, to get a commitment that they would in fact, you know, lease this or want, or enter into a lease? Because they could technically enter into a lease with the current owner, right?
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, some of us, I think, I was wondering about if we should talk about an executive session, et cetera, but, you know, I guess, just from an overall point of view, I They could. They could go enter into a lease with the current owner, but then it makes the property more valuable if we're gonna try and buy it. So, I would rather us buy the property, buy the property and we could have a, an agreement with the rec contingent on us purchasing the property that they would lease space from us.
Yep.
I mean, I, you know, I can tell you, all eight chiefs, you know, so it's the four towns times two, and the four town administrators, we're all very interested in this. The architect and the engineer, we're all very interested in this property.
Who has the, sorry, who has the final sign off? If you all were interested, is it still go back to the state, whoever gave you the money, or is it?
No, the four town administrators are the, we're the board for the MECC. So, we are very powerful people.
Nice. So, you could They set that up. They wrote that.
Yeah. So, you could decide on that now?
We could decide that. The one thing that we have to rely upon, you know, in the background behind us is just to get the rest of the funding from, you know, probably come from the state, from 911. We've applied for the FY '15 grant to finish getting the money that we need, you know, and a lot of the money that we need is not, is for communication systems, radio tower connections and all that stuff. So, it doesn't do us any good to have a space without all the
Stuff to put in.
Without it working. One of the nice things about this space too is it's right, it abuts our water tower, which, which you can already see we have antennas up on, so we'd be happy to put another antenna up there.
So, what's the, what is the rec, what are you guys forecasting as the annual rent for each town? And going forward, what were you thinking you would end up paying?
Well, we never got a number. That was one of our frustrations with Rentham was we never got a number from them. We, we were trying to propose to them that we would, we would look at commercial rates and then have a, you know, kind of a minor discount from that rate. I could, I'd be happy, you know, I don't, I, it would be great if we could come up with that number now. I mean, it would be up to us to propose a lease to the rec, but I would just kind of get the going rates for, if we can find some comparable numbers and see what that number is and then we'll propose that to the, to the rec.
Because, you know, it seems to me in the short run, buying the building is the thing to do because even if we don't put the police station there, we can still rent, part of, part of our debt service has come off the rec and then we'll have three quarters of a garage.
12,000 square feet, yeah.
12,000 square feet of at least garage space should
With the need for DPW.
Yeah, DPW move, if that has to happen for whatever reason, because we have a fire down there.
Park the police cars in there?
Yeah.
Is that what they run?
Exactly.
It could, you know, it could
Hey, I mean, it starts, right? It's the maintenance.
Throw a tent in the back and have the cops sleep there.
It could be a temporary facility if we, temporary facility while we redid the public safety building here.
Because we need a staging.
Not that I'm proposing that, but we do, that is one of the missing pieces of our old plan.
And it's been vacant for five years. So, this is more of a negotiation issue, but I can't imagine we're gonna be paying a ton.
I wouldn't think so. It's a, we had some discussions. You know, they're looking for about a million. I'm not, I'm not judging. I'm just saying that's what, that's what I heard from one of the brothers. What's that?
Well, then let's look somewhere else.
Yeah, I'm not, I certainly wouldn't want to overpay. You know, and we, and obviously, we're limited to only being able to pay fair value. We can't, you know, by chapter 30B, we can't over, we gotta get an appraisal. We can only, we can only pay that number, so
It's been vacant for five years and
You guys put something in there.
Well, you can do this under a capital item, right?
Well...
Or do you want to put a separate article on?
He doesn't have, well, you don't need the, you don't need the debt service for next year, so you really don't need to worry about it in the budget, because you won't be paying anything for it. You could, if you take out the loan in FY15, you're not paying until FY16.
We're not paying, I guess we would need...
You need authorization to do it.
Need authorization to purchase the building.
So that's another warrant article, though. That's, because it's got its own special vote attached to it.
Probably, I know, Jim, I did tell you that it'd probably be under the cap.
I think it should be a separate article. I mean, I think it merits that kind of discussion.
It should, it should, it's significant. I mean, we could do a, we could do a special meeting within the town meeting, that way we could compress, you know, a timeline outside of this process, if you wanted to do it that way, or we could open up this warrant. I don't have an article to give you tonight, but we could put an article in, if you, those would be the two different options that I would, I kind of would think the special meeting within the meeting might be an interesting.
Cleaner.
It's cleaner, but with, with the new moderator, and, you know, I mean...
All the candidates are very...
We could, we could be there until sometime in July, working our way through that one.
Well, you know, what we could do is, we could hold off till the 29th meeting to figure out the path, and then reopen it, or whatever.
Well, you have a meeting with the advisory board when, this coming Monday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, sorry.
Thursday.
Thursday, this Thursday?
No, not tomorrow, week from Thursday.
I got my hopes up. It's something I think should be discussed with them, and it does have some sense of urgency to it.
It, oh, it does.
I mean, it, this is, I mean, you could negotiate this contingent on a town meeting vote.
That's what I was thinking.
So, you know, we're not bound to start this process ASAP, because it has a sense of urgency to it. And even if we didn't get funding to do the whole thing, we've now at least got that option in the bank, a usable piece of property that could be used immediately. I mean, we've got trucks outside right now that could easily be stored down there, and it provides us the alternative we need for public safety, so, just a matter of timing.
Well, it doesn't...
It's a shell right now.
I can give you, Bob has a, you know, I can show you the plans, it's got, so on the back, on the, so the back wall is, there's a mezzanine, probably comes out 20 feet or so, and so the intent is there to have two stories along this whole back wall, and there'll be either offices or bathrooms. They didn't build them out, because they're looking at these as kind of condominiums, if you will, so they didn't know if they'd put, you know, a bathroom in for four garages or for two garages, so they just haven't built any of that stuff out. But, there's, all the plumbing is there to do it, and all the piping, you just gotta put the utilities on the wall.
That's good.
It's a pretty nice-looking building, and so, so just for a little background on the police station, you know, Chuck and I have, and Bob kind of sat down, tried to figure out, could we make this space work? You know, he had, we went through a process where he was saying, well, we should build up the second floor, and, you know, make it, we could get up to 24,000 square feet, probably not that much, but that was the potential. And he came back and said, you know, no, I think we should just go, you know, to 12,000 square feet, he talked to other chiefs that are building buildings, and I'll, Eli and him, and I think Melis are building buildings now, and he thinks that size would work for him. So we're talking about, like, if you look at the map, probably like the last two bays we would keep as garage space, that way, and we could, there's another garage on the far end of the building coming in from the back, that would be the entrance to the Sallyport. We might even build a, we talked about building kind of a garage within the garage, so that he could back, he could go inside the building and then back up into the secure garage, and then that's where they let the prisoners out, and then that would go right to the holding area. So then we would use the next, we would use the next two bays, we have, somewhere in there, we would have cells, and then the front section, you know, which are the third and fourth bays on this picture, would be the offices and other space for the police department use itself.
Would you put his cars inside, though? Enough of his cars?
Yep, I think we could, if we, we're gonna, and it's kind of like what the DPW is, so you'd pull in, and then you'd do like kind of the angle parking inside the building, and there would be, I think Bob, Bob had kind of calculated easily 10 cars would fit without, with them all having access to be able to get out. If you had some type of a storm or something, and you wanted to put more vehicles in there, you would, you could put more in, but you'd be, at that point, you'd be blocking some cars in. But, it'd be out of the weather. So it's, Chuck, Chuck is very excited about this space. He actually suggested coming, he said he could come tonight, but I know he had a early morning this morning, and an early morning tomorrow morning, so I didn't, I told him, I said, "I thought I could handle it."
You can't, all right.
What are you thinking?
I'm just thinking that, well, Jim had mentioned making an, you know, doing offers contingent on town meeting, and I, I didn't know if you could do that.
We did that with, well, I'm thinking we did something like that with, like the Weber property, we had, that was matching a...
We have done, I know in the municipal housing trust, we have done purchases contingent on town meeting votes, because we couldn't, we didn't, we had to get the funding from CPC.
Yeah, CPC does it, CPC makes, CPC...
So, there is precedent for that.
But it's contingent on town meeting, well...
I don't think, you can't do a P and S, because that's a contract, and you couldn't enter into a contingency contract like that, I think as a town, don't you, I mean, anyway, it's neither candidate.
Purchases have all kinds, I don't know, I'm not an expert in, obviously...
So at any rate, why don't we...
I think we, I'd, I'd get the public safety building committee together as quickly as possible. And then if you want to talk about a warrant article that we would put on at the next selectmen's meeting, is...
And you could preempt this with the advisory board and let them know what's going on.
I can do whatever I want to do.
Why can't we?
Because the selectmen don't meet till the 30th.
It's got to go to print.
And it's going to print on the 27th, I believe.
Yeah, that's what...
This next meeting is the last, the advisory board, to give them time to get all this up to them.
Why, I mean...
Is this an article tonight?
I mean, I was going to say, we could open it, put an article on to do this, you know, if it all falls through, nothing lost.
Put in the last one.
And then you can talk about it next Thursday with the advisory board, so that they're aware of what we're doing here, and I would, I think it's just too good an opportunity not to try.
Okay. So there, see?
And I mean, some, I know you've looked at a lot of different spaces, and we've gone through so many, I can, at least four iterations of a public safety facility.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe more, actually, and, you know, sometimes we get lucky, this, this just, I mean, literally, when this all fell kind of upon us here towards the end of last week and today, and you start putting the numbers even, even pessimistic, opposed to optimistic looks at what this might cost, it's, it's less than half of anything that we've looked at, any option that we've looked at. So it's just, it's too good not to take a shot at it.
All right, so, I move to reopen the warrant for...
I second.
2014 annual town meeting. Motion made in second, any further discussion? No, all those papers say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the ayes have it. All right, let's draft a warrant on the fly here, guys.
Okay.
To see if the town will... We should make it an indebtedness vote, correct?
We'd have to borrow.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd have to borrow.
Can we say raise inappropriate, or, or borrow, or this, or that?
To raise inappropriate or transfer from any available source? I think the King Philip articles...
I was going to say, use that, right? Just modify, just change, change to us, some of that stuff. Maybe use some of the turf money. Oops, you guys left it in there, sorry. It's turf. We got some support from the local house.
Yeah.
You could play football on the roof.
How much does CPC have left?
We gotta put a slide at it, then it's a recreation facility, it's a playground.
This will cost less than the playground.
To see if the town, and I can give you this, to see if the town of Norfolk will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, borrow or bond pursuant to any applicable statute, or otherwise provide us a supplemental sum of...
Well, we, we don't need the supplemental sum.
You don't need that language.
Raise inappropriate bond for the purposes of purchase and renovation of a building to serve as a regional communications, emergency communications center, and...
Norfolk Police Station.
Norfolk Police Station.
And, so hey, all other incidental costs related there, too?
Yeah, relative there, too.
Yes. We got it, we got it.
Okay, note taken.
Or take any other action relative there, too.
All right, we proposed that article.
Where do you want to put it, and how would you like the number of everything else behind it?
It's at the end.
It's at the end?
We'll pop it forward if we need to, if it's, if it's a hot topic, we'll bring it up and say, "Look, guys," well, you guys will do that, I'll be sitting in the cheap sheets, seats.
Cheap sheets. You can do it for us, then, you can suggest a move-up.
Mr. Moderator, I move to move up. So what's the article number?
Well, just whatever. I started drooling over this today, when we're going through the numbers.
37.
37. Very good. Okay, so Article 37 is here with, placed on the warrant. I move to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any other missed if you want to cause, Mr. Administrator?
None, not.
I was going to say, not...
Well, before we close...
Any more on the warrant?
No, no, not really.
Okay, motions made in second, all those papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, no, the ayes have it. Warrant's closed again.
I hope this works out, I really hope this works out.
I hope it does, too, this is, it's going to solve a couple problems.
A lot of apartments.
All right, you have more? Are you done with your report?
Yeah.
There you are.
We had a couple of missed ladies, thanks, we'll do those now.
Sure.
Registry deeds is coming in on April 17th, they host their open house at the town hall in this room from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. They always get a few guests come in, but I recommend you come in. Mr. O'Donnell will be here, who's the registrar. We had challenges going on this week with the Fox Run subdivision, just, there's, we need to do some verification, there's questions concerning the pump, the fire pump that was put in, fire pump versus booster station, depending on who's determined who's...
I thought it was drinking water pump, too.
Does both, yeah, so, but the, but the pump that's used for the fire increase, it, I think we're going to be able to resolve it tomorrow, we had a lot of discussions about it today, but it's the question about whether or not, it's just semantics, really, is what I'm trying to tell you, between a couple of different engineers and the fire chief, and some referring to what a fire pump should be, which has a certain UL listing and has some specifications associated with that term. Versus a booster station, which does the same, has the same capabilities, has a different UL listing and other technical things that I don't even claim to have any knowledge of, but the bottom line, we need to have a pump station that creates enough pressure at the top of the hill to fight fires. So I think we've, we've talked to the chief, and we've talked to some of the engineers, and we should have that resolved tomorrow, but a little concerned at the beginning of the week that we were going to be putting the whole subdivision on hold, but I think we've worked through that today.
Okay.
It's been raised as a suggestion that Kids Place, the old Kids Place, be, when we go for reuse, that we think about putting a, I forget the term, this is Ann, Ann Proto used, but a small, basically a small baseball station, you know, a kid's, like a single A, you know, younger kids' baseball field, because we lost one when we did the Freeman Kennedy School, we lost that one that was down by the tennis courts. So as we, as we get the new playground up and running, and we can transition people from Kids Place over to the Rockwood Road Gardens, we can, then, I know we're going to decommission Kids Place, and, and we've talked about it in the past, that we need to think about the future use of that, and so I guess, Ann and the Recreation Commission are hoping that we'll at least think about using that as a, as small, you know, it wouldn't be the major leaguers, it would be the really young kids, T-ball type age kids.
And where would the cost of that come from?
I don't know, I don't have a suggestion.
Where would the key money for that come from?
Great question. Hopefully do some fundraising and...
Also, Jack, and they can build it over that septic, I thought it was always an issue, too, there was, you know, this isn't the septics there from the...
You can put a field on it.
Put a field, no problem, do anything.
There's no topography issue?
That little green grass here, it's kind of high out a little?
Not if you, if you look, if you, it's pretty flat out, this is, this is the benefit of having grandkids that age. If you look right at the playground itself, and there's field to the left of that, and so if you took the playground out, that's the area she's talking about.
Then she needed, wouldn't she need a lot more additional parking than is kind of currently there, too? I don't know how much space that takes up, leaves out the field.
You'd be surprised how many cars you can get in there.
I mean, I see cars, they were there today, like I said, it's already being used.
But I've seen 25 or so cars in there, on a good sunny day in the old days.
Hanging out there with the kids, young, young parents, you and...
Some of the older folks there would be young kids, too.
Green kids.
Recycled generation.
That's two, two, you going for three?
No, it's, I think I'm good. So not asking for any decisions, but just as we start, when the time is appropriate, to start thinking about that.
Big lights, small, permanent bathroom.
Just a technical question, I mean, we, the board back in 1987 gave, gave, I'm sure there's proper terminology, but allowed the usage of that for recreation. It's not changing, if they put a field in there. It's still recreation.
Go do it.
Why would we even, I would question whether we even, I mean, I would think if they have the funds, they have authorized use of that opportunity, I would think they could just do it.
They'd still ask us, I thought, I don't know, is it, doesn't, but isn't it still controlled?
Maybe they're just being overly polite.
Have to, have to take a look, but I remember when we did research, when we looked up, remember when we looked this up?
Tried to find it.
We found out the thing was, they, I know the board of selectmen voted to basically turn it over to recreation.
Could they do it for like 20,000? 23,000, 24,000? Because then they could do right out of a revolver.
They could sell a car.
We generate that much surplus every...
Just had to throw it in.
I mean, can they do, use CPC money, too? Make the new, right?
It could.
Actually, under the new law, you could.
They could.
I mean, it's up to that, I mean, again, like you said, I mean...
Yeah, you can use it for existing land now, as opposed to the old law. Well, anyway, it's, I just, I may be wrong, but I think they...
Yeah, if it's there, deal.
I think we gave them usage of that for recreation, and a ball field or playgrounds and different.
Yeah, I think, but there was some discussion that, a year ago, or that it was still...
I wouldn't, if they want to formalize it, that's fine, too, you know, that's, whatever.
So if you don't mind, I'll move on to the action items.
Oh, no, please do.
Please vote to allow the Norfolk Federated Church commission to hold their Easter sunrise service at the town cemetery on Sunday, April 20th, which happens to be Easter Sunday, from 5:30 to 7:00 AM.
Oh, I thought they used to use downhill.
They did.
Okay, they moved.
At some point, didn't, right? Am I correct?
Oh, it's eight or 10 years ago.
I thought it was always downhill. Maybe we have, maybe we have been there, we sit downhill, or whatever.
I will recuse myself from the discussion, as a member of the church.
All right, I second. Motion's made in second, any further discussion? This is a annual tradition, we do this every year. All those papers say aye. Aye, oppose, no, the ayes have it. Please vote to approve the amendment to the DPW contract.
This was the contract that we discussed in executive session, but we didn't want to take action upon it until we were back in open session, so this is taking action upon...
This is the...
This was a...
Additional 20 hours for the position within the solid waste division?
Correct, and...
Ground maintenance.
And the clothing allowance.
Clothing allowance, and then the town has the ability to staff the transfer station with a part-time person outside of the union, so we can do it at a lower cost, so that was kind of the give-back.
I move to approve, we did discuss this, sir.
Motion's made in second, all those, all those papers say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the ayes have it.
And my final topic for tonight is, Old Town Hall's come to our, we've been approached by the Norfolk cable, that they are expressing an opinion, expressing an interest in using the Old Town Hall for their studios, they'd give up their school space and their space over at the Wayside Building, and they have an interest in using the Old Town Hall. And they have an interest in using the Old Town Hall and they would like, love to have discussions about entering into a long-term lease into using that building.
They have funding to renovate it?
I, they have said, they, I, they have said they do.
Because they, it's a very nice studio they have over here.
Looks like a nice studio. I think they want more space.
Yeah. Really do some nice little, you know, paranormal experience kind of films, homemade films in that town hall.
Did you get, uh, Jack, how long they want, how long the lease?
Just renovate the downstairs, use the upstairs just for that purpose.
Yeah. Blair Witch Norfolk style.
I, they came to us just over the last two days. I didn't have a direct discussion with Dan, the director, but he spoke to Bob and then Bob shared this with me, but they originally were interested in something like a ninety-nine year lease. I think we would probably, my recommendation would be more like a twenty-year lease with a couple of five-year extensions on it if you wanted to do that.
But the question isn't, isn't cable versus nothing. It's cable versus, is there productive reuse for the building in sight? So.
Well, you could, you could frame a lease in a way where, like, let's say you had a, a buyout at the end of ten years that would require us to reimburse them for the renovations at whatever, if they spent a hundred and fifty grand to renovate that building.
Right, they don't want to be stuck with that if we kick them out, right?
We could terminate the lease, but with a buyout for any expenditures that they've incurred to renovate the building. That's not, that has been done if we found a crisis situation where we needed that property.
Or better use.
You could do, you could do something like that. That has been done.
I mean, I, I can't, you know, we've racked our brains over the last ten years about trying to figure out what to use that space for. And, you know, community center, community center, veterans hall type facility.
Do you know, if they, would they, they hope to renovate, Jack, would they want to take the whole space? Could we, you know, could they, you know, give us back some space? I mean, you're talking to them about some wire, cable, some work you want done.
Building's not as big as you think.
It isn't, I, yeah.
Have you been through it lately?
No, I'm scared.
Wise decision.
Only when Ann goes, if Ann makes me go over there for recreation, if she's mad at you, you have to spend a day in there.
It's not as big as you think.
All right, no, I didn't know if we could get one thing, you know, I didn't, you know.
They didn't say. I mean, I, could we carve out a room or something?
It's not worth it, it's not, yeah, it's not worth it. It's just a room. I don't know how much between up and downstairs.
I mean, this.
The basement.
Mary used to work there.
To, to me, the most underused space in the town is the senior center. Now, that probably caused some controversy, but we, you know, the senior center could be used for a lot of things that it's not currently used for. You go to other community, well, Plingville.
Oh, so you're talking about.
If for meetings and things of that nature. Yeah. I mean, there are a lot of.
I thought we were in a non-sequitur. I was.
No, there are a lot of opportunities where if, if we ran into a situation where we needed space, the senior center.
And they've got a ton of space, the two floors.
They have a ton of space. And, and I don't mean to, you know, imply that it's not a good thing for the seniors. That's not my point. It's just that it has, it is underutilized for what we could do with it if we had that type of situation. We don't have the need at this point in time, but if we ever did, that's a spot we could go.
I would hope they would pay utilities because the, the place is a pig.
Oh, yeah. No, I think.
Everything would be tripled.
That would be my expectation. They'd pay a hundred percent of the utilities.
You talking about the Old Town Hall?
Old Town Hall.
Oh, they'd, they'd have to spend a good chunk of money to renovate that place. They know that. They, they know that. They can borrow.
Yeah, I could talk to, I mean, Jack McPhilly is the chairman. I could talk to him about.
They, they've got an annuity. I mean, they've got a guaranteed revenue source, so, you know.
Right, it's kind of easy to get money.
Yeah, I mean, Verizon and Comcast, you know, they got a good deal going, so.
And they just, they just got fifty thousand dollars of, not that that's enough, but of the last installment of the capital money from the Comcast contract.
Was that for the HD switch over or something?
No, it was just the, the capital for peg in general that, public access.
Yeah.
That was part of the contract that we signed three or four years ago.
Well, I, I think that's a very interesting possibility. Should we empower Jack to negotiate with them further?
Absolutely.
I move to allow Jack to, direct Jack to negotiate Norfolk Cable and bring back to the board a proposal.
Excellent.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Nope.
Well, a question, so we did that, do we, does that require us to do anything at town meeting or that we can do, we could just enter into this to?
The disposition.
Not really, because we still own, we're just leasing it, right? Semantics, I don't know.
It's an interim municipal agreement, but they're not really a quasi, I don't know. It's a great question.
I think you need an opinion on it.
Yeah.
We'll reopen the warrant.
Again, we get the third, no, again, we're doing it tonight. No, I just, you know, it might not happen till a little later. I'm just thinking, Jack.
The school, the school doesn't need it to rent, to lease out space at the school, or at least they haven't done it.
Well, actually, we're, you're authorized in, there's a generic article that authorizes for land dispositions other than sales.
Only tax title land, all right.
But that's a good point. The school does that.
Yeah, okay.
They lease out specifically.
Doesn't mean it's right.
Yes. Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the ayes have it. Go ahead, Jack.
Well, we want to do it right, whatever it is.
Motion adjourned.
You had an executive session on our agenda.
I was going to revise the agenda.
Yeah, you got to revise.
The one that went out to the public had an executive session on it.
I just have one update, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leehan, please, what's your?
Well, seeing as we spent such a deliriously humorous part of time discussing weights of old units, I did meet with Mr. McGee and there was a simple solution, one that will just absolutely make us all happy.
We just don't take TVs anymore?
Way 'em. So he's, he's going to purchase a scale and we will set, he will set up a simplified fee schedule by weight that will be posted and make it easier for everybody.
Wait, when the price to get rid of the big TVs goes up, they can thank, they can thank the board of selectmen. Instead of being ten dollars, it could be like forty bucks. They'd be like, oh, thanks, thank you, guys.
So the message is get rid of your old big TVs now.
Before Mama's Town gets your money. All right, well, that's excellent. Do you have anything, Mr. Bugby?
I don't.
Okay. Well.
Mary, did I miss anything?
Mary and Jack, any final comments?
All right, well, I, I would move that tonight when we adjourn, we adjourn in honor of Lieutenant Walsh and firefighter Kennedy, two public servants who gave their life, lives earlier this week, or late last week, I'm sorry, in, in helping the public. Firefighters' lives are difficult and stressful. There are long periods of boredom punctuated by horrible intensity and sometimes these tragedies happen and our thoughts, our prayers are with the family of the firefighters, their children and loved ones. So, all of you, we will see you again April thirtieth, Wednesday night at seven o'clock. Thank you very much. Stand adjourned.